All set.
Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, March twenty second, twenty twenty four, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, meeting two of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. On Wednesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, Governor Healy signed into law chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty first, twenty twenty five. We are live and remote at our regular scheduled meeting of March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Please join me in so many.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That's what I've done. Roll call. Commissioner State.
And present, sir.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Shea is presently at a forum. There was no executive session today. Number four minutes, the open session meeting of March twentieth. Commissioner Collins.
I like the motion to approve the Minister of the Open Session Meeting.
Thank you.
The second motion made second, all favor. It is approved.
Just a note, Commissioner State in states.
Correct, two to zero. Appointments we have none. Number six, public comment. Each week we have a agenda item listed on our agenda, a public comment. It allows people out in Zoom land to call, or people to come in in person and appear before the Commissions. I'll call out now. Does anyone in Zoom land, so to speak, remotely out there would like to speak in a public comment session? Now is the time to bring it up. Public session. Director Cronin, have you had any requests? No, sir. Okay. Last call for executive, uh, public comment. Seeing none, we're going to go to net number seven, which is old business. We have no old business that I know of. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration. Commissioner State.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, with pleasure, I'd like to move the Parliament. We have two matters for the Norfolk County Agricultural School. Both have to do with the, well, let's see. No, the first one is notice the contention employment for Nora Fox to Rentham as a substitute instructor at the rate stated, this would be effective four one twenty four with a projected end date around four twenty one twenty four. And then for the same person, I'll say make make one motion. This person, Nora Fox of Rentham, would continue then thereafter as a long-term instructor at a different rate, and it would be effectively at effective day would be four twenty two twenty four. So make that motion.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Excellent.
The President's Golf Course that follows my motions. Notice the job title change for the following individuals. First, Caroline Catherine Cavici of Quincy.
Cavicki.
Cavicki, sorry. Seasonal Golf Associate at the rate stated effective date three eleven twenty four.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Elizabeth.
Notice the job title change for Michael Doyle, Seasonal Golf Course Associate. The rate stated effective date three eleven twenty four, so move.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Oh, wait, wait. I'm going to save for now.
Okay. Motion made, and I'll second it. An appointment of Michael Doyle as a seasonal associate at the President's Golf Course. All in favor?
Aye.
There is a vote next.
My third, notice the job title change for Isabella Frenell of Milton as a seasonal golf associate at the rate stated effective date three eleven twenty four, so move.
Motion made in second, all favor. Aye, Elizabeth, next.
Fourth, thanks, our friend. A job title change for James Fitzroy of Plainville as seasonal golf associate at the rate stated effective date three eleven twenty four, so move.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor. Elizabeth.
Move approval and notice the job title change for Isabel Medua, Medua of Randall, seasonal golf associate, the rate stated effective date three eleven twenty four, so move.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor. Elizabeth, next.
Notice the job title change for Michael Smith of Wayne McMass as seasonal golf associate at the rate stated effective three eleven twenty four, so move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Elizabeth.
Two more. I notice the job title change for Robert Robertson of Quincy, Mass as a seasonal golf course associate, effective date three twenty seven twenty four, so move.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor. Aye, Elizabeth.
And the last one, I wrote, notice the job title change for Carol Arnold of Canton, Mass. Seasonal golf associate at the rate stated, and it would be effective date three twenty seven twenty four, so move.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
That takes care of personnel for today. Number nine, payroll and expense warrants to approve. Commissioner.
All right. I don't know Carol. I don't know. I don't know. Good luck to her. All right, the warrant list for the three twenty seven twenty four. Move the following. First one, several ops as well. Twenty four dash thirty eight, payroll of the county, move approval of one hundred forty five thousand, two hundred ten dollars, sixty six cents, so move.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Elizabeth.
Next up, move approval of the expense to the county of oh three, oh four, twenty four for the amount of one hundred sixty five thousand, seven hundred sixty two dollars, fifty seven cents, so move.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor. Aye.
The next group, Mr. Chairman, are all opera awards. First.
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll go right through them because opera's the next.
Right. So we have an opera award for the town of Canton, twenty four dash thirty nine. The amount is nineteen thousand, nine hundred ninety four dollars, so move.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Elizabeth.
Next is for twenty four dash thirty nine, opera award to Dover. And the amount is fifty five thousand, two hundred seventy seven dollars, so move.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
That's approved, Dover. Next.
Next three, the rest are all for the town of Bellingham. And they're all out in twenty four dash thirty nine. The first for opera award for Bellingham, move approval of forty four thousand dollars, so move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
Second award for Bellingham, a move approval of forty five thousand dollars, so move.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Elizabeth.
And the third and final opera award to Bellingham, move approval of the amount twenty nine thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye. That concludes the warrant list.
Any questions about the warrant list? Okay, next. Let's take out ten and eleven and blend them together. Report American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one and opera awards for approval, which we just did. You need to clarify anything or explain anything about these awards, Joe Nelson, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. The first item is to reveal the details on the Canton Opera application for nineteen thousand, nine hundred ninety four dollars. Um, Canton's latest application is a revenue replacement advancement for an emergency generator to store COVID and full vaccines within the time of the weather. Currently, the board must promptly store vaccines in neighboring communities. This particular item is their latest, and I wanted to inform you, Commissioner, state because I thought it was. They have approximately eight hundred thousand dollars left, eight oh six, after this award today.
Everybody reading my mind today.
All right, thank you. The next item is Dover application was fifty five thousand, two hundred seventy seven dollars. This is also a revenue replacement item to provide funding towards the building and construction of a salt shed, stormwater design and engineering. The total cost is eighty five thousand, two eighty six thousand, five hundred dollars. This cost offsets Dover's cost associated with this project. It's Dover, and they're getting close also.
Dover got any money left?
Seven hundred fifty thousand. The next three are all Bellingham. The first is a generator under revenue replacement with a water tank itself, Main Street. Tanks hold the tennis release, fire school, and heat power radio systems. Second one for Bellingham today was forty five thousand dollars, also under revenue replacement for police station locker room expansion design. This is associated with expansion of female police officer staff. Required to provide more locker room space for both male and female officers. It was funny we go towards that design. Finally, Bellingham's last award today of twenty nine thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars was a revenue replacement item for a library boiler replacement. After today, Bellingham, who's also been with us quite often, has thirty three cents remaining in your allocation.
Thirty three cents?
How many more have we given, do you know?
I don't know. If I had to guess, I'd say a dozen.
They're pretty active.
They were. We've had a couple of communities that have project related stuff, like Midway was all one and done, Wellesley close to that. But Bellingham, Milton, Dedham, they're very active. Frank, several others.
I mean, Bellingham, but a lot.
Second.
They were good. They were pretty good.
Yes. For the whole project. Yeah, they had a change in leadership out there, and they still kept going. So that is your update on ARPA. Uh, one other thing I just want to point out, the Commissioners are slated to meet on April fifth in Plymouth County, for the County Commission Association. Excuse me, one of the talks and discussion will be updates from counties on ARPA. This past week, we held our monthly meeting. We are, uh, we're all trending in the same direction, active, closed out phase. Each county is doing it differently, sufficient to say. They, they are aware that Norfolk County intends to use any surplus towards the redistribution of those funds back into communities. We have a phased approach to doing that with new contract awards going out in July to reflect that. So other communities, counties are not doing it that way. They're not redistributing, redistributing those funds to the communities. That's their choice. Key. So it's interesting to learn how each community is approaching it differently, but overall, you'll learn more on April fifth. I believe I sent the logistical information to you.
Mr. Chairman. Quick question.
Yes.
If it's possible, can you list out two, which I total amount, we've given out there? Are we over one hundred and five, one hundred and six? Like Norfolk County?
It's. I don't have that here. It's right over one oh six. It's almost one oh seven, which means we're about three.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, last call. Anything else on opera? Okay. Number twelve. Get openings for one thirty. We have none. It's not one thirty, but we have none. Number thirteen, contract awards. We have none. Number fourteen, fiscal year Commissioners Budget Preparation and Vote. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. This afternoon, it's my pleasure to deliver to you a balanced FY twenty five budget. Um, I have a PowerPoint presentation which is in front of you, and I'll ask you to pull up at this time. We'll go through the presentations. You understand the gist of how we prepared and presented this budget, and following that, I'll pull the budget up. Go line by line, whatever process you may choose. But to begin with.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a copy of that?
That right there?
Oh.
Do you have your budget?
I was only sent the registry portion, so.
Oh.
They left yesterday evening, so.
Do we have an extra one here on this counter or not?
Cut this.
The presentation is up on the screen, so we can make it, we can make a copy available.
Why can't we have it now while we can take?
All right, I'll get your copy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Got two more I have to.
Do you want to take mine?
Well, we'll get you one.
You're always giving the registry something.
Fifty go. All right. So I'm going to look at notes.
One minute recess. I'll get one of these made up, but I'm coming right back in.
Okay.
I got my early, early version today. I mean, for Sam, sure. Thank you. I was going to give him a worry, but he'll call soon. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. The budget development page, Bill, please.
On Wednesday's.
Bill, here you. Yeah, Bill, if you could pull up the PowerPoint presentation and pull it up to Agenda. Thank you. Next page.
There you go.
So this afternoon, I'll touch on these four areas, budget development, balancing, how we achieve a balanced budget, a look at our revenue picture, and finally close with a peek at how we're closing FY twenty four and twenty five. This is a overview. It's not meant to be detailed, but to give Commissioners an idea of how the budget's functioning. Uh, budget development page, slide three, Bill, is reflecting the budget schedule. As you can see, today marks the March twenty seventh timeline. We will vote on the FY twenty five budget, including capital, which we'll talk about briefly momentarily. Two weeks from today, this matter will be presented to the Finance Committee Advisory Board for their hearing on the budget or their vote following on May fifteenth. So we're almost at the back end of our overall schedule, but we are, are on time. Next slide, Bill. Development itself included three separate weeks of budgets presented to the Commissioners. As you can see, we started on February twenty first, followed on the twenty eighth, and finally on March sixth, all budgets were presented to the Commissioners publicly for discussion. Slide five. So regarding the budget development, the budget no longer provides employee names. As a result of recent attempts by outside cyber slash phishing incidents, our IT staff has recommended using the employee ID code seen on each salary page. Uh, this is consistent with other public documents now that understand that sometimes outside actors will take names of employees and use them as pseudonyms for other actions. We've seen some of the, some of these attempts in the past, so we're moving away from names and into the employee ID. You'll still see the employee's title and salary. This budget features modifications to approve streamlining of legal accounts, consolidating the Treasurer's Office and the Registry of Deeds seven thousand dollar line items with the county under the miscellaneous expenses code number one oh four five two three five. We have a new regional services budget that hosts weights and measures and RSVP now. We hope to grow that space in our budget, reflecting what the county can give back to the respective communities we serve. Each department now also has an organizational chart in front of their budget, including a countywide chart at the beginning of the budget. This county organizational chart also features a small planned FTE headcount by department. It's just a small tool to help individuals either analyzing the budget or curious about how we do our business, how our staffing is reflecting the last three years. This budget also improves the presentation with banner, white space. In prior years, I mentioned to the Commissioners, we desire to achieve a greater transparency and professional appearance of the budget, similar to what Barnstable County did. We spoke to our consultant, Matt Abrahams, who helped us to achieve some level of new design similar to what Barnstable has done in the past. And then finally, the counties have preliminary review with some vendors to resolve what I call the snap-on software needed to receive infinite vision data and work a final budget with a software that provides uniform and professional presenting. What this means is we continue to build a budget based on departmental input into the infinite visions database. And then we extract that content into Microsoft Excel. And we use Excel as the space to work the budget, balance it, and then format what you see in front of you. Excel's a wonderful tool, but there are better solutions out there that act as a better match towards that data from infinite visions instead of Microsoft Excel. It makes the summing, the calculation, the work, and finally the formatting much clearer. Our IT staff has had several introductory presentations by vendors, some of them as a result of the MMA conference, and we'll be furthering our conversation with available solutions into FY twenty five. We don't expect it to be a large cost, but we do expect it to be something that has a feature that gives us better reliability and a lower chance for for data entry. There's way too much data entry going into this budget presentation, which can lead to errors. So we'd like to streamline it. This is the same process the state uses. When I worked for the state, all the content is in the state accounting system called Mars. Then they use a separate budgeting software that mirrors the Mars content. That's where you put your budget. That's where you extract and format them. So we're going to try to move in that direction. Microsoft Excel is just not a platform for this type of work.
So we're not there yet. We're heading that way.
No, we're heading that way.
That's the goal.
That's correct. Uh, next slide, Bill. Upon receipt of all budget requests against the FY twenty four revenue base, our budget was two million, two hundred and sixty one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars to fish. The FY twenty four, the FY twenty four revenue was analyzed for FY twenty five growth and reduction. And as we built our FY twenty five model, we recognized registry transaction and deeds exercise had to be reduced collectively by one million from the FY twenty four base. The remaining major revenue sources are expected to be leveled to FY twenty four, with the exception to miscellaneous receipts. These are up due to the projected full fiscal year receipt of rent for the Quincy District Court. However, FY twenty five will be the last year that we receive court reimbursement for Quincy District Court plus this rent payment. So it's the end of the road for funding from Quincy. Our non-recurring ARPA interest is being used to offset a large part of the revenue loss from the registry of deeds transactions in excess. Slide seven. So to balance, overall, we had to adjust out from the departmental submission several items. Walson recreational facility, we reduced additional resources that were requested for temporary salaries. The registry of deeds appropriation was based upon Mass General Law, Chapter sixty four D, Section twelve. It is now projected in three point one five two, five, three, four million dollars, or five hundred eighty six thousand, seven hundred and seventy one dollars below the request by the Register. Consequently, the registered budget was adjusted with the elimination of the two requested expansion positions, four vacant positions for the registry of deeds, reduction to funding levels for many areas in level two through five, and go through as short as you wish, as well as everything combining was reduced to one hundred twenty six thousand dollars, one hundred twenty six thousand, seven hundred fifty eight dollars to balance. We will evaluate the registry's budget in September once the actual spending is realized. We've done this the last two years. In the event the registry's spending is above what we project, we'll adjust it. If it's below, we'll do the same. So September becomes a reset point to just check in on our projection for the registry's expenditures for our year. Finally, engineering, they have requested one expansion position for, I believe, a survey crew chief. That item has been eliminated from consideration. Slide eight. Due to limited revenue and spending opportunities, the only expansion item funded in this budget is one FTE for weights and measures. It's a sixty thousand dollar a year position to address the growing program needs. Weights and measures currently has four communities receiving services from one FTE. Those four currently in the program are Canton, Needham, Franklin, Rentham. We have signed an agreement for Westwood, but they're not on board yet. We will get there. We've recently received demand or interest from Dedham, in addition to Westwood. These are two large communities. Thus, the need for this additional FTE. We have several others who are very interested in the program. They haven't made the leap yet. Some of them have existing employees who have maybe aging out of their role or contracts and relationships that they are going to be evaluating. The program director has been discussing a possible career match of this role with Norfolk Aggie. There's been several discussions between the principal and staff to possibly find a student who we could match with the program and certainly be mentored by our full-time employee. And then finally, due to the revenue shortfall in FY twenty four, no capital budget is planned for FY twenty five. This may change if and when the revenue model improves. Slide nine. Still under revenue due to revenue plan, the county remains beholden to market-driven volatility associated with property transactions from the registry of deeds. The annual budget is built on recurring and non-recurring revenue. The county will need additional recurring revenue to sustain fixed costs while using non-recurring spike revenue above baseline to fund capital and level one-time costs. The community assessment fees remain stable and grow at two point five percent per year. Our count, our court assessment will drop in FY twenty six once Quincy closes. But we're fortunate to have some ARPA interest on board to offset our current position. Our solar revenue looms once that clears the courts. That could provide one to two hundred thousand dollars per year when it happens. And our county retirement costs were adjusted up in FY twenty four. Commissioners may recall a visit from our liaisons to the Retirement Board that changes were voted upon that impacted the contribution the county made towards those liabilities. Those costs significantly hit our operating budget. However, they are expected to level in FY thirty, offering relief and half million dollar major or so by that time. So we're several years out from that remedy, but it is, right now, the county needs something that is more stable and recurrent. I leave in mind on non-recurring, which is not recommended. Slide ten, Bill. As we close FY twenty four, the county took action in December twenty twenty three to free spending and hiring due to projected deficiency amounting to one million, sixty two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. The county has not observed any meaningful change in this deficit outlook, and that's through our January trial balance. The most recent trial balance for February is due out this Friday. Uh, we will continue, as I said, to monitor the developments of how revenues are coming in on each month through the end of the year. Back in December, the county set aside seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars of our FY twenty four surplus. And we projected an additional three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in unspent departmental funds to help close this deficiency, which is all great. That's closing the deficiency against revenue. And I need to remind the Commissioners that one of the interesting dynamics of our budget, we need to find within our surplus every year ten percent of our county assessment to fund the future year budget. In this case, the county needs to generate an additional surplus of seven hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred twenty six dollars to fund the budget next year. So we'll have no expectation at this time to fund the capital budget because that is in first position need to balance FY twenty five. All right, eleven, Bill. The county will, looking into FY twenty five, the county will need additional recurring revenues to same fixed costs while using non-recurring or spike revenue that, as I mentioned, above baseline to fund these capital and other one-time costs. I will note that the county will monitor federal interest rate adjustments. Prognosticators like Mr. Connelly from Forbes, as early as today, offered a message in his newsletter that I'll read briefly. The Federal Reserve will likely begin cutting interest rates in the summer of twenty twenty four. Federal Reserve Chair Jim Jerome Powell has stated multiple times the policy would be data-dependent, meaning they will not have yet selected a particular path forward, but would make decisions as they get more information. Uh, this information sometimes is rooted in actual knowledge or basis of understanding. Nobody really knows what the Fed's will do until they do it, but most prognosticators, and Forbes is a good one, they see that there may be some relief in Federal Reserve's approaching sometime this summer, and if it does, that could turn our revenue picture around in FY twenty five. We can. Um, final slide, Bill, is just a special thanks to our department heads who helped us assemble this budget for your review and consideration today. Our fiscal team of Bill Buckley, Phil Ann Cosco, Nancy Rockwell, and Will Robinson. We've worked throughout the month of March to assemble this product on weekends after hours. Our team at every week doing multiple reads, going through every line item and doing the research needed to give you the information today to hopefully vote on this proposal. And finally, our information technology team was also instrumental. Sam and his folks helped with the ore track development in the last minute and pulled up, but I think it's a nice enhancement to the budget to see for you today. That's the end of the presentation. Commissioners, I'm happy to go into the budget. That's what you would want. Chairman, there are items within there that are replicative of a presentation.
Questions of whatever the Commissioners want.
Okay.
Sure. Commissions. Questions, comments? We didn't mention. I don't have any questions. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, Chairman, obviously arriving back, I've had a little time to review it. That's, that's, you know, I've had tests to look at it and try to process, and there's legacy from the Register as well, so I want to maybe comment on it. But so essentially, you've, the budget is balanced. Your budget is balanced because of some cuts you're presenting and well as use of revenue from ARPA, right? The ARPA interest.
Largely, that's right. This is a four point four percent increase right here. And it totals thirty seven.
All right, so working backwards, top of my head, for what it worked respectfully. So the position that we're, the only expansion position, when I gather, was the weights and measures, correct? And it looks like it's like the cost of sixty thousand. But truthfully, that's even a fake number because that position will generate revenue for us.
It will have some offset, yes.
So isn't there really a truth? Isn't it more like a fifty or a forty five?
Um, it's, it, yes, you could, you could offset it. I will call your attention to the revenue page in the budget, which I believe we're projecting to receive sixty thousand dollars this year in revenue, so there is an offset, but we are now taking on a second salary with the program. It's not completely fully funded by the program, but it is, to your point, offset.
Okay, so that's good. Okay. Um, second thing was, I know that I mentioned this before, and I know that it's, it's something you explained to me, so I apologize. The sale of the Quincy courthouse, they generate for us a substantial amount of money that we have put aside in some respect.
Ten point four million.
Right.
In the bank, as they say.
And I see on that. I appreciate that, you know, as a town official, I get.
I assume it's getting the maximum available treasures.
Right, but that's still something that would be available for us if I could, this could, like you said, it looks, you're looking beyond. This kid, like you said, it looks, you're looking beyond this year as I see. If the revenue receipts continued from under registry, continued decline. Let's say the economy doesn't turn around, all right? And then we've got the retirement commitment and the receipts are trailing off. We have that at least as something that we could look at, can't we?
Um, I would, I, I.
Capital or something?
I, I would not envision using the capital funds received from Quincy District Court to balance the budget until and if the county ever reached extremes where it couldn't pay bills. And as you painted a picture, revenue was evaporating left and right. It would literally be the last thing that you would do.
Right.
That money is tied up in a capital improvement fund.
Right.
So any vote to take the money out requires a two-thirds vote of the advisory board for that purpose. So it's, it's the back end of any kind of liquidity.
Totally with you. I just see an extra in the town. You don't want to tap funds on local level. You need to keep those funds for building improvements, but why aren't we using a little bit of it? But I mean, I hate to see a year with no capital budget. It just bothers me to say with, oh, no capital this year. Couldn't we do some of that to do something, to some projects?
Commissioner is prerogative. There's an interest in using that for capital, maintenance capital needs. At this time, I'm not recommending it because I think it's too early to tell. If F Y twenty-five begins as F Y twenty-five closes, your best bet to your point, Commissioner, is to monitor that instability. Where's it going? Are we about to enter a high inflationary period? We have a significant national election at stake that usually changes market-driven things. The Fed interest rate projections that I just read, anybody's guess.
Yeah.
I think it's important to keep in mind that if F Y twenty-five does change in a favorable way, start to generate revenue above projection, we can pull together a capital plan very quickly, okay? And you may have a remedy by this time next year if our fortunes change. But I think it's safe to say that leaving capital aside for one year, while we watch what those uncertainties lie ahead mean to us, is the wise approach. The capital money that's tied up from the Quincy District Court, the commissioners have basically said it for now, leave it in place. It'll be useful for large capital projects that are beyond our operational needs. And because we are at capacity with our borrowing, that flexibility gives the commissioners the ability to handle large-scale capital projects and get reimburse from the state board. So we want to keep that fund free and clear of operational needs as long as we can.
Okay. And the last maybe question, comment, and just again, my, my glance, my review and reading it this morning and hearing you. It appears that in fact, there's no real true layoffs, right? The budget presents a budget. There are people or proposals by different department heads for expansion. I didn't stand that. But there's no real layoff of course.
That's correct.
Which is always right. There's nothing there. I said, there were suggestions for expansion. I saw that, you know, postponement, which will sure be brought to our attention, but no real layout for people.
That's correct.
Okay. Did this build in also retirements of people, projected retirements, things of that sort that happen?
None lonely.
Okay. All right, that's all I had for now.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Want to comment on, on, on the amount of employees? There's a line here. Three-year projection, although last, this being year three, or next year being year three, is, are we down? Did I read it right? We're down two or four employees?
Uh, correct.
What, what page is that?
Four.
Page four, okay. I got a note here. On page four, Commissioner, which says organization chart, says planned full-time equivalent C by the Bob, and this gives you twenty-six, twenty-four, and twenty-three.
So these are figures from the respective fiscal year prepared budgets. In twenty-three and twenty-four, they're not meant to be the actual F Ts. These were planned, so they're guidance. And in F Y twenty-three, overall, the county is projecting two hundred and sixteen F Ts. An additional six largely from the agricultural school were planned for F Y twenty-four. And then in F Y twenty-five, we're planning two hundred and sixteen, reduction of six. Most of them again from the agricultural school went from one eleven, one eight, right? Several from registries.
Okay. So, all right, so yes, my question is incorrect.
No.
So we are, we are laying people.
We are not.
We're not. We're, we're, we're saying here.
We actually have less than we have.
This is fiscal twenty-five, correct? Okay. So fiscal twenty-four, we had two, two, two. This was twenty-five, we're saying they're two and six.
Correct.
We're down six.
That's correct. And not for layoffs, those are vacancies.
Oh, vacancy. Okay, yeah. That's what I'm saying. That's what I meant. There's really not.
Forty's been laid off.
Forty's like people getting a layoff. That's all I was trying to say.
And I mean, it comes up, it came up last week because we hired a new, you know, we promoted someone to prince, to senior historian at the Quincy Court. It always comes up. Conversation comes up. And we, we, we're always dealing with it, but we, because we started this so early and we knew, you know, if, if, if Quincy Court were closed on the day that we got to ten point four million, our services were no longer needed. I mean, we're looking at three jobs. So since then, the senior retired January first. We anticipated that as one. We moved someone up just last meeting. So we're always in, in the back of our head aware of it. It should stand for every department.
Right.
Hopefully, intent is not to let, not to let anyone go. Why hire someone to let someone go in, in three months or six months?
Plus, as we've discussed, we have the impending closure of Quincy. We want to make sure that people who are are taken care of, not, we don't want to hire and let people go.
This plan.
You know, we hear that they finally have identified a place in Quincy that they're going to move to, but we haven't been able to officially. I believe when that happens that we're gone as far as maintaining their property. We have signed for this year, but not any further.
Yeah, it's an important point. This budget plans on Quincy District Court being open in Quincy through June of twenty twenty-five. Right. That could change. They could be out in May or April, but we're planning through the end of the year.
But then that falls off.
Yes, it will. I don't think any expectation right now unless the least it Commissioner Shea just referred to with D C A N falls apart and things go sideways where the new location experience is difficult to retain and build up. That, that happens, we might go into fiscal year twenty-six, but the trial course has not been forthcoming. Too many details. Our projections right now are conservative to ensure that we will have funds to get us through fiscal twenty.
I try to help, you know. I've got another question.
Okay, any other questions now? All right, any other comments on this budget at all? Register, come on up. Can you see me here to talk about the budget?
Yes, I am. Always everybody. I guess, I got the budget. I got at least the registry portion yesterday. And, you know, there were some significant cuts and I just wanted, I, I sent the letter. I know people, it went to the three commissioners. It was John Cronin had asked for input. And I, I gave it, does anyone have any questions about that letter? We have deeds excise money, the forty percent share, and I was wondering why none of the forty percent shared by statute that's supposed to go to the registry wasn't used to try to lessen some of the significant budget cuts that were done to the registry.
Is this the February twenty-eighth letter?
No, no, that was the March twenty-fifth.
March twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay, I got them both. I mean, I, I looked in both. I was just drawing your attention, I see.
Thank you. So Director Cronin had sent a thing saying there was, there was a deficit and again, some of these cuts that you made dealt with registry union promotions, I mean, current union promotions, not just proposed union promotions as well as staff, which, you know, again, you know, we certainly need staff because it's great to train people and get going, but I just, the bigger question is how come the deeds excise monies weren't used to lessen the impact of what was proposed in this budget?
Commissioner, the question comes as a form of indirection, in my opinion. The budget does fund four point two million dollars in deeds excise monies coming in. Registry's budget is funded from deeds excise pursuant to Mass General law, so I concur. I would concur that in fact, these monies are being used towards the obligations of the mandate.
The mandate as given by Director Cronin was three point one million. And again, that's based on spending and I, I get it. Through the chair, did the director factor in that you've had hiring and spending freezes so that the spending has been artificially low this year, right? We, we, we haven't been allowed to spend on contracts, on printing. We came in here in March for a mere eleven thousand dollar, you know, a union employee. So the number is the number, but has the director factored in that that number is artificially low on the mandate side?
Director Cronin, to the registrar's question, the factoring in is a rather misdirected question again. The registrar is ignoring the fact that there were several attempts and by his office to request additional spending for discretionary items, and they were approved by this office, including one item, somewhere where he wished to produce more promotional material based on a speaker series from Veterans Day. After some back and forth, additional spending associated with that request was provided. I believe in total, the registries asked for, in terms of spending, two separate items. That one that I just mentioned was approved in portion. The second one was approved in full. So with respect to the question, there's been no inhibition by this office to suppress his spending. Regarding hiring, register points out that there was a position that he requested that came before the commissioners back in February. We had a discussion about that position and you declined to hire it because of head clerk position.
Again, you want to use the word misdirected. I'm just trying to understand the process, Mr. Chair, and keep it positive. Deeds excise, in essence, what you did was say the mandate is three point one million and that's your budget. And what I'm saying is, back to when in the nineteen nineties throughout, throughout, Mr. State, he was on the advisory board. Deeds excise money was used in addition to the mandate. So what I'm asking for is how come the deeds excise that is specifically for the registry, the forty percent wasn't used to impact, for instance, the promotional cuts? You cut two, two elevens, other entries. There was, there was six positions cut. I recognize it's your prerogative to, to cut the fifteens that were proposed. But what I'm saying is you can use the deeds excise that comes in to lessen the impacts of the cuts, and there are a few more other cuts I want to talk about. So he can say the money came in. I'm asking, the money that came in for deeds excise, where is it in this budget that, that is used to lessen the impacts of these costs? Because the budget is, the budget is three point one million, which is the county mandate. And to give you a sense of numbers, and it was in the letter, Mr. Chair, on March twenty-fifth that was sent to you. I attached the deeds excise just for this year, and it's been, it's, it's been a sluggish year, but the registry still has to be prepared for, for it to get better. That's why we try to train staff and have people come in. But the registry's forty percent share was one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and nineteen cents. That's the forty percent share over one point one million dollars through February twenty-ninth of this year. So clearly, for fiscal twenty-five, money's going to come in. And if money comes in at the same rate as it's coming in this year, and I would suggest one point one million, we still don't have the spring season. There is deeds excise money to lessen the impact of these costs. So he can say all this money, the deeds excise money comes into the county. I'm specifically asking, in this budget, how come the deeds excise money wasn't used to lessen these cuts, whether they were the union cuts of promotions or union jobs or some of the cuts that were in the, of the codes?
John.
So commissioners, again, the question comes in a number of different forms as the register conflates F Y twenty-four with F Y twenty-five. And F Y twenty-five, this budget is balanced against four point two million dollars in registry deeds estimates that we know today. The registry's estimates for F Y twenty-four are static and still present a deficiency that I mentioned earlier we were attempting to resolve. If the registrar is being honest with this question, I think the question has to be, why aren't, why isn't the county looking to fund more than the two point five percent mandate? That's the question. And the answer is because there aren't insufficient revenues to cover those expansions that he requested in his budget that is presented to you.
Again, no, I'm not asking you to increase the mandate. The mandate, you set the mandate. You're setting it based on your extrapolation of two and a half percent of this year's expenditures. Again, this year's expenditures were artificially low, but we, we'll have to accept that. What I'm saying is, the budget we submitted, you could have used the forty percent share of deeds excise, which by chapter sixty-four D section twelve A, the registry is to get forty percent. And I know it keeps saying, oh, well, we, we'll revisit it in September. But every time we, you know, we come over here, there's a hiring freeze, there's a spending freeze. So when we revisit it, and Mr. Chairman, for instance, the printing was cut. A business vendor, we have a contract with Holbrook's Printing Unlimited, Town Book Bindery. I mean, these, these are contracts that are signed and it was a significant cut made to printing. We have to, you know, honor these contracts. So we don't have to revisit it in, in September. We need that money in the budget. And the deeds excise is available, and I'm not trying to conflate anything, Mr. Director. I'm pointing out that there's over one point one million dollars registry share in fiscal twenty-four. I'm not trying to conflate anything. I'm trying to give the commissioners a comfort level that if there's one point one million dollars in the forty percent share of the registry's deeds excise for fiscal twenty-four, you certainly can see that we're going to have millions of dollars in there, in there for fiscal twenty-five. So I don't understand why you, you can't use the mandate figure, which, again, I think is artificially low, but we accept it three point one, but add four hundred thousand from the deeds excise, of which this year we collected one point one million through the twenty-ninth of February. And, and that way you don't have to cut, you don't have to cut grade eleven union promotions. You, you know, you don't have to cut staff. But more importantly, it can fund things like the printing, you know, the printing expense. And also respectfully, if I can ask through the chair, why, yeah. I appreciated our budget hearing. I thought it was cordial. I know we have disagreements. Why was our legal request, I had to put a legal request in because you, you people appealed the case. Our legal monies, we asked for a hundred thousand, has been reduced to zero. Now, I think, you know, we have disagreements, but I just don't think it's fair that you people have attorneys, and I'm not going to rehash the hearing. If you remember fiscal twenty-two, you spent a hundred and eighty-five thousand in legal fees and Scott Lopez of Lawson and Wheaton got a hundred and sixty-seven thousand of it. There's a lot of money being spent on legal and the registry gets zero. And, and, you know, that was another significant request. Back to the printing, he mentions the veterans. You know, we just got invited, Mr. Chair, the Quincy veterans want us out there. We have no books to go on the thing. So when he, you know, we didn't get what we were looking for. We only got a limited amount of books for the veterans. We asked to get more. And, you know, there was an admiral looking for the books. We said, take care of the admiral. We said, we tried to take, take care of everyone. We need the books. I haven't brought it up to the commissioners, but I mean, the fact that veterans books and, and we were out at the Braintree American Legion recently. The Quincy wants us out there to do a presentation and give out the books, and we don't have enough books. I mean, so if he's going to bring up the veterans book, I wouldn't go down there. I have lived by your hiring freeze. I've lived, he's probably shocked that we don't have money for veterans books, that veterans book. But that's not what I'm here for. What I'm here for is fiscal twenty-five. We have tried to live within your spending and hiring freezes. And you, you're looking at vacancies at the registry? How can we fill positions? We tried. When you have a, a, a hiring freeze, we need people there. The union wants promotions, but more importantly, why wasn't the deeds excise money used to fund the legal request a hundred thousand? It's down to zero. You may say a hundred thousand's too much, but is zero the figure you want in this budget? That's what's in the budget.
Go ahead, John.
I'll just reiterate a remark I made during the presentation that the registry's legal services, along with the treasuries, have been moved to legal services under miscellaneous expenses. There's seven thousand dollars for both the registry and the treasury in that line item at this time.
Again, I haven't, you know, I appreciate, we just saw the full budget. We only got the registry yesterday. And I think that legal amount, you asked for a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and with, with that increase, it's probably one sixty-nine. I have, I, I haven't seen the full budget. But what does that mean? The way it's worked in the past, we need a line item in our budget for our legal fees. So how much money out of that hundred and sixty-nine thousand are we going to get?
Seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand dollars. So first of all, I think it's not transparent to put what our figure is in. We, we asked for a hundred. And again, I wish we didn't have to ask for it, but I didn't appeal the case either. So, I mean, seven thousand dollars, then, I would still make the same argument then. You know, I saw zero in the budget. If you look at our budget, it has zero for the legal fees, and he's saying it's seven, but now it's slid over here. We still need, I mean, seven thousand dollars versus fiscal twenty two, the county got to spend a hundred and eighty five thousand. And just recently, and it was only through February twenty ninth, the county, not counting the Aggie school, spent a hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety six dollars and forty nine cents on legal fees. That's from July first to February twenty ninth. And Scott Lopez, who's, you know, battling the registry, obviously, on behalf of you, one hundred and two thousand, three hundred and thirty five thousand and forty nine dollars. And it was brought up on the, at the hearing, and I'll bring it up again, in fiscal year twenty two, you know, you know, the, the, the Aggie school got an appropriation. Please note, the Norfolk County Agricultural High School received a legal services appropriation in fiscal twenty two budget of forty thousand dollars. So I think the registry should at least be put on par with the Aggie school, especially we're in litigation. I mean, it just doesn't seem right. I think, I think zero is unconscionable, but I mean, seven, not much better. I mean, do you think, through the chairman, do you think, Mr. Cronin, seven thousand dollars versus what you're spending on legal fees is, is appropriate? Given that you've appealed the favorable ruling of the Superior Court Judge?
It's an awkward question to ask me. I think that decision is made by the advisory board and the commissioners. I'm making a recommendation to level fund the legal services for the registry and the treasurer from FY twenty four levels into the FY twenty five budget. Furthermore, the register made another brief, brief dalliance with the truth there. He received a budget yesterday on page code number two commissioners. There was a note that says transferred seven thousand dollars based miscellaneous. He was aware we were moving the money into miscellaneous.
Well, let me, let me, let's find something, I have to cut you off. If any of this says, I, I, I express to our director and I, I, to the board, I said, I'm troubled by the idea of taking all the legal fees and putting it to one area, because I recognize at times there are occasions, aside from the ongoing unfortunate litigation that we're experiencing, putting that aside, there might be cases where you're going to need lawyer fees or a lawyer to litigate who has a title issues or areas that concern the registry. You agree with that?
We, we try to keep the expenses down. We have some fine attorneys on staff, but we, we, in this case, we know we need the money. I mean, I mean, obviously, there's an appeal and the other cases going on.
It's a, it's a moral, a legal and ethical dilemma for me. It must be for all of you to think about, well, how much money do we give someone to turn around and sue us? What's the proper amount? I don't want to be put in that position. It's very awkward. It is, you have to recognize that. But I'm saying, put that aside if we can't. Let's put that aside. Let's put it over there. All right? And that cloud, as, as a department head, is there a, a number that would be reasonable based on prior years where you need legal services or cases that come against the registry that have to do a title or land quarter, issues of that? And I'm not going to put you in the spot. I'm not, Bill. I'm trying to say, is there somewhere we give up with something?
We asked for a hundred thousand, somewhere between what we asked for a hundred thousand and seven thousand. I, I'll leave it to you what number you think is fair, but we need something. Come on, you know, I, I mean, you need, and when you say sue, you know, I didn't want to sue, but let's not get into that. This is just on the appeal. Think about it. How much, you know, I'm looking at, at Attorney Lopez's bills through, through February twenty ninth or a hundred and two thousand. Wait till you get Marches. He's, he's doing a pretty good job battling for you and making, making me, who's not an attorney that does appellate work, goes through it. And what I'm saying is, let's forget the other litigation, which, you know, that's still ongoing, just to, just to have monies to, to, to to defend this appeal that, that you people have taken. So, you know, lawsuits aside, yeah. A number fifty thousand, I don't know, but, but it's not seven.
My point, where I was going, my discussion was that, I think maybe we should look at, as a board, if we're going to do that, might be time to have a county council. I think years ago, those who talk about the advisory board, way back in the days of a lawsuit with a guy named Dan Mundy and a guy named Robert Hall. And they were talking about, well, maybe we need a county council that would be on board to represent the county on all issues.
I, I, I'm, I'm operating under the assumption we do have a county council. I don't think we have referred to them as such, but I have never consulted with another, I consult with two attorneys, Scott Lopez and Michelle Murphy Lamery, which is, of course, Michelle McNulty, and at the school, it's an associate of hers, Josh.
Right, but that's two firms. That's not one, that's two. That's two. And there are times where some
Depending on the subject, rather.
Right.
Yeah, it's very
And old personal, the, the fine attorneys are outstanding in their areas. They do a great job for us. I'm just saying perhaps we should look at it. Maybe it's time to look at it. You know, well, before we have one firm, that hint at all those things. Just a thought. Just a thought. What came back to your problem in your situation? I don't know if seven's the right number. I don't know if ten is. Is it twenty? Am I, you know, picking a number? And if we do that, you have to understand something too. The budget here is presented by our director is balanced. It's almost like town meeting. If one of us, I think, has to say, well, we want to change it a little bit, you got to show what the change is going to come somewhere else.
And that's why I'm trying to show the deeds excise money.
That's what I'm getting, so I'm getting there. So, because I got a town meeting, if you want to raise something, you got to show on the budget where you're going to lower, or is there some revenue that we're not utilizing? Fair enough. Okay, so the revenue that you're claiming, does that go to the crux of, again, I hate to say it, the other argument we've had going between what we say you get and what you feel we get, that mandated amount? Is that, or is that something else that I missed?
The mandates by statute, I've always said that the registry should get two and a half percent of the prior year's expenditures. He ballparked it. I think this year it's ballparked artificially low, but we'll see. But I know it's going to be low because of the hiring and spending freezes.
And I get that.
So we get that. The deeds excise is different than the mandate. The deeds excise, in the past, the registry got the mandate and got to use the deeds excise that it's, it's forty percent share, not your share, the forty percent share. So that's what I'm saying is, there's deeds excise monies available. You may want to still cut the, the, the jobs. Okay, fine, but there's money, because that was the point of my, my thing is that you, you could have had no cuts there, but if you want to make cuts, cuts. But the printing to get, you know, Printing Unlimited and Town Book Bindery paid, it was cut to like a hundred and twenty thousand. I mean, you know, we, we had, I mean, we, we certainly should get that increased. And, and, you know, I, I mean, I disagree with, with some of the other cuts, but what jumped out at me was certainly, you know, the contracts we have, I could get into two thirty nine, but, you know, really, what jumped out at me was the legal fees and the, and the printing. We, we requested the printing because we got to print indexes because of these hiring and spending freezes. We haven't, we haven't spent money on the print, you know, printing and things like that. And again, it says request one twenty six, seven, five, eight. We didn't request that. We, we, we requested a hundred and eighty nine thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars. So, you know, it's, it, it's a pretty, pretty low request. Mr. Director, through the chair, you know, you said you, you came up with this budget. When was this finalized?
It's not finalized right now.
But from your perspective, when you came up with all these numbers, when did you finalize?
Last few days.
The last few days, yeah. So, you know, again, that's the point. There is deeds excise monies available. I'm not trying to conflate anything. I'm just trying to show in a slow year, fiscal twenty four, we have one point one million. And
So Tom, was that number used by you? Did you agree?
That number, again, he's conflating. He's talking about FY twenty four resources. This is FY twenty five. So I'm, I'm standing by, by my projections that we stand on a deficiency in revenue collections for FY twenty four until we reach the end of the year, when we'll assess if that accurate projection is going to be all true. For FY twenty five, we're using the same model of correction, of collections into FY twenty five that we see today. As I mentioned earlier to you, Commissioner Stady, that could change if rates change, the, the markets change. I don't, don't know if they will, but right now we're conservatively estimating the collections based on what we know today.
And that's happened in the past too. I know in the advisory board, that had happened a lot of times. Suddenly there's a change, and so people come in for supplemental appropriations, right? They change it a little bit. That's a possibility there. If the, if the feds cut the rate and all of a sudden the market goes crazy, the revenue comes up. You know, if there's no reason why you couldn't go back and say, okay, and the money's looking better now, can we work with some of these other positions?
But where is the forty percent share, that is the registry share by sixty four D, twelve A? Where is that share spent on registry costs? Because th, th, this budget just shows the mandate's three point one, and that's what your budget is. Is that fair to say, Mr. Cronin?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. So, so the mandate is twelve B. You get a mandate. So the director's saying, there's the budget three point one. But there's other, the, the state legislature has given another revenue source, and that's deeds excise. So I'm asking, and maybe through the chair to Mr. Cronin, what was the deeds excise monies for fiscal twenty five in this budget? What was it spent on as far as the registry goes?
Of the four point two million collected, three point one five two will be part of that. The
Can you show me that is?
On the register page?
Yeah, please. What page is it?
Page three, right down. Deeds excise estimate, four point two million.
Page three?
Not on the registry budget. It must be on the main budget. But we didn't get the main budget, so. That's just the presentation.
This is the statement, commissioners, that we've taken for the last three years that I've been your director to preparing the registry budget. Nothing's changed.
Through the chair, Mr. Mr. Director, couldn't the forty percent share of the deeds excise be used? Is, is it by statute? It's supposed to be used for registry budget purposes?
It could be.
It could be, but you, you choose not to, correct?
I chose to abide by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter sixty four D, Section twelve. We've had that
Which, which twelve? A or B?
B.
Well, B is the mandate. What about twelve A that gives the registry a forty percent share of the collected deeds excess, of which you get sixty percent and you can spend it anywhere you want? So out of the forty percent in this fiscal twenty five budget, show what particular line items are, are those registry deeds excise being used to pay this cost?
You continue to ask a question that's found and rooted in the notion of fund accounting. The county does not do that. We don't take our reg, our revenue and assign it to expenditure categories. The state does. You can see on any given line item, a fund split. And if there's no mention of it, it's general fund. But if you're funded by special revenue sources, it is mentioned. We don't do that. So the registry deeds, along with all the other revenues collected, are bundled into the overall revenue model. I just told you, four point two is projected for registry deeds revenue. We're meeting the, the directive of Massachusetts General Law, sixty four D, as I've mentioned to the register multiple times. He keeps asking a question about where to map that. We don't do that.
You, you, you indicated the state does that because
I did.
It's fair, it's fair to say that the registry does have a funding source. The state legislature gave the registry a funding source in section sixty four D, twelve A, correct? Is that a funding source for the registry?
It's a directive for the funding source.
And since you've become director, you're the one that's pooled all this money together, because prior to that, it was always separated. It was the sixty percent share was shown as the county and the forty percent share was shown as the registry. You know, whether you show it or not, the registry's still entitled to forty percent. So why isn't that, those, a portion of those monies? I'm not even asking for the whole one point one million that was shown through February twenty ninth to twenty twenty four. I'm just saying some of these cuts, I mean, you, you could, you could take, actually, if you saw my letter, I, I, you know, it, it, I, I wasn't saying take a million dollars out of it. I, I was basically saying, hey, look, if, if, if you cut some, some part of it in the balance, I think, came out to four hundred and seventy one thousand, you could use that of the deeds excise. And there's still one point one million through February twenty ninth. That's for fiscal twenty four, I recognize, but it parallels. There is going to be millions of dollars coming in at fiscal twenty five. And why can't you use a portion of that? If you pick the legal to be fifty thousand, use registry deeds excise to fund that. If, if you believe that there should be more in the printing, even if it's forty thousand or whatever number it is to get those contracts on it, then you take fifty thousand for printing, forty thousand, fifty thousand for legal, there's a hundred, and, and you know, you, you do it that way. I mean, I know we got to prioritize. I mean, I don't want to address every wrong I felt to the registry, but I mean, I'm not going to bring up Rich, the temp money was to zero. Rich Kennedy, who's worked eighty seven, from nineteen eighty seven to nineteen twenty one, and comes by and has worked part time, or Gary Lubin, longtime employee, you know, I, I mean, no other, I mean, to, to put our budget to zero on that, I mean, I, I, I can't ask for everything, but I just think the registry's being targeted here, and it doesn't have to be. There's deeds excise money that, that's available, just, just when we talk, you people come, I'm trying to, look, I, I do think we, we need legal money. Even seven thousand that's then been moved into some miscellaneous account, that's, that's nothing compared to what, what is being paid here. I, I, does anyone think it's fair that, that, I, you know, they say a lawyer who represents themselves has a fool for a client. I shouldn't, I did not choose this. I should not be representing the registry and the, and the taxpayers' interest on this. I have, we've been fortunate, you know, maybe we were lucky to win the first one. I don't know. I think the law's the law. But now we're in the appeals court. Come on, I should have an attorney. I mean, the two attorneys on the board, I'll ask through the chair, the two attorneys, don't you think people have a right to representation, Peter?
Of course.
As I said, it's a moral, legal, ethical dilemma. You know that. You know my position on that. I wish we didn't have it, but that's, you know, that ship to sail. I'm confused still about the mandate though. I'm hearing your argument. I'm trying to sort out this. Now, I'm just trying to, I can't identify this, I can't identify it in the material I have in front of me. Could you please point out what, what line you're reading from?
I think it's, am I right here?
Is it this one?
No, that's it, right here. And, and from, from my perspective, in years past, John says our budget should be three point one million. Just say the budget is three point five million. In years past, it was three point one million from the mandate and four hundred thousand from proposed deeds excise revenues for fiscal twenty five. It, it's an easily solved problem. You know, would I like everything you cut back in? Sure. But, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, just trying to move this thing forward cooperatively. I mean, we've had some rough sledding here, and I just think that the registry, you know, that's the easy solution, and that's the legal solution. And quite frankly, that's the solution that was done in the past. You have the county mandate, which by law he says is three point one million. If the budget was three seven or three five, then you just take four hundred thousand from deeds excise, his three point one million, and it's a three point five million dollar budget. You haven't cut anybody. You haven't cut promotions or wherever you allocate it. Put some money into the legal, put some money into the printing. Do I think there should be money in two thirty nine because, you know, we, you know, we use those contractual services? Yes, but legal and printing, I think we could at least a, a, agree on, and certainly, you know, I do think jobs are jobs. I mean, because those jobs aren't vacant by choice. I was here not that long ago, you know. They're, they're vacant because of a hiring freeze.
Yes, Commissioner?
Oh, just waiting to see. You have any comments?
I'm going to listen to all of this. I've listened to it before. I don't have, well, I have an obligation, of course. Mine is a little different as a non-adorney. But when you take a difference in, in, did you tell us last week we were out of budget? How much, six hundred?
Overall?
Yeah.
Uh, over two million dollars.
Okay.
What we started.
If you took two million dollars and you take all the seven departments we're in charge with, they're all here. Maintenance, engineer, treasurer, weights and measures. I mean, where, where is the money? Overall, where's the money in the county? It's in the registry deeds, good and bad, coming and going. It's a fact that we, I don't think that's being litigated, but I mean, we're not, we all know that.
Yeah.
Where else in this budget would you try to, I don't think it's the balancing, is that before? Is that personally out of, out of balance? I mean, the county, this engineer and the engineer before have asked for another person since I've been here. There was little as three, they're back to four, and they're asking for five. We cut the fifth one out. Again, every time it comes up, when a town comes in and we talk about, gee, we wish we had that other job. Well, we don't even get up to bat at it, and, you know. I mean, are you going to cut it from the county treasurer? I mean, I, I don't want to throw this budget back at anyone and say, well, you find it. You, you, where are you going to find it? I mean, there's some, the built-in costs are without question. We were happy two weeks ago that the mid-law group came back with only a four point four increase. We thought it was going to be more. We did get thrown a little, as usual, curve ball on the pension obligation. But if we're, if we, on one side, instruct our pension bureau to listen to what the mandate is to fully fund your pension by twenty twenty-nine, we had to go up. Now, is it six hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay. I knew that figure was somewhere on my mind. I mean, where else are you going to get this money under straight conditions? Now, it is flabbed of cause of lawsuit. And it drives me crazy. And we only talk about certain parts of the lawsuit when it's convenient. And I try not to talk about it at all because that's what I've been told. And it drives me crazy. If you want to put our, we can't put our budget on hold. I'm proud that we're living by the dates we're going. And when we've been much later than this, I'm not advocating it, but we were fighting budgets to July sometimes. If this interpretation of, you know, twelve A versus twelve B, et cetera, et cetera, is going to be adjudicated, then I'm not going to change my stance until it's adjudicated. And I, as I've said before, if you're getting the wrong information here, it won't happen again after we get it legally thrown at us. I'm not happy that we have to come up with three million dollars because the budget's down. But the fact of the matter is, we knew coming into this, the way that things are going, the budget's down. Because again, the revenue that comes in. So. I mean, I appreciate every department head coming in here. Who has the most to talk about? Register O'Donnell. It's for a lot of reasons. The main reason in my mind is he is the biggest department. It's not, you know, it's not even close. He's also the big, only biggest revenue generator. I guess we generate a little revenue. I don't know that the maintenance makes any money, but, you know, we have a few other places that make a little money, very little. We're going to, you're going to cut someone at the golf course or make some changes at the golf? You know, we're pecking away at that, trying to, trying to do the best we can, so. I'm going to vote for this budget as presented, and if, if we're another year into legal, so be it. And Bill, you had a lawyer, by the way, about four or five years ago, had a figure. It was there before any litigation. And what was that? I looked, I ran all that by you. I think it's twenty-three. And I noticed in that legal line, you were paid out other things, not at all in the legal line.
I don't know what you're talking about. We, we did have a lawyer, and if you're not to get into the lawsuit, the current lawyer, Attorney Keston, was around from fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two, and all this. Started before there was a lawsuit.
Well, what was he doing before there was a lawsuit?
Given, I didn't want to sue you people. You, you, there was a vote on the mandate, which was wrong. June tenth, twenty twenty, I kept telling you, it should be two and a half percent of the prior year's expenditures. And it wasn't voted. You were on the advisory board. Some people voted the right way then. I didn't sue then. I didn't sue when the deeds excise money was taken at the close of fiscal year twenty. Or, or, you know, there was, you know, just in the past, the registry was allowed to accumulate the deeds excise. It wasn't sued. But then when the IT started, it became clear, like, you, you're taking the registry money. But to be positive, what I'm trying to say is, you're right, there's a lot of departments, but those departments don't generate income.
No.
And they don't have a state statute. The state legislature, whether, you know, Mr. Cronin likes it or not, or you people like it or not, the state legislature has given the registry funding sources. And one of them is the mandate, but the other is the deeds excise. Not the whole thing. You get sixty percent. If we have one point one million, you know, you have a heck of a lot more than, than, than we do on the one point one million. Actually, through, through February twenty-ninth, you have one million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine twenty-five, seventy-eight. So you get more. But what I'm saying is, if the state legislature has given the registry a funding source, then we could use that deeds excise. It's not cutting any of them. You just, you just put it in there that it's a, whatever that you add, whatever the money is for legal. I mean, you got to say, zero, seven thousand, zero, that's not right. Printing, we got to fund those contracts. Whatever it amounts to, you just say, okay, John Cronin says the mandate's three point one. Three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand from the deeds excise. There's a three point five million dollar budget with, you know, a little fairness, a little equity. You, you people, you know, have to assess where that goes. And, and we're fine. I'm not asking for the whole amount of money. But I, I, I keep asking, where has the deeds, where is the deeds excise money that's the registry share being spent?
Aside question, if I could, Mr. Chairman. So try, so you got the mandated and you got deeds excise. I got it. Mandated, you're not disputing that. The mandate is three point one million, right? Round it up, okay. So the issue seems to be the deeds excise. And in this projection, it says here deeds excise estimate, four point two million. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So of that four point two million, are you claiming or asserting that four hundred thousand should be used to offset your problems? From that?
The registry share, whatever it is, I mean.
So what's the registry share of that amount?
Mr. Cronin, what's our share?
Of the four point two million.
Forty percent.
Forty percent by law, right?
So it's forty percent of four million? About one point six million?
Yes.
Well, I'm not right. Four, four, sixteen. So where's that one point six million?
It's in his base budget, Commissioner.
Where is it again?
It's in his base budget. It's part of the three point one five two.
Well.
So that goes back, that's as part of the mandated county spending.
That's correct.
Okay. So it is built in there then.
He wants more of it.
It's just a.
But, but in the past.
Right.
The mandate, which is a county bill.
Right.
If you read twelve B, you have to pay the mandate. The red, the, the state legislature says the county has to pay the mandate. That's the three point one. I'm just saying, I'm not asking for the whole forty percent. You got to see how the year goes, but another four hundred thousand to his three point one brings it to three five. And there's a spot right there. It says plus dedicated deeds revenue. It's zero if you look at that number. In the years past, all kinds of years, there were numbers put in there to, to balance the registry's budget. And, you know, and, and then you see where it takes you.
Right, what, what happened there, Mr. Cronin? If you explain.
I don't know. Those were prior years. I'm sorry, were you referring to the prior year mandate?
No, it just said deeds dedicate revenue, so there's nothing in there.
He doesn't want to give it.
That's correct. He's getting, he's getting one hundred and two point five percent of his prior year spending. That's what he's getting.
Okay. So it seems to me that we're just basically, the crux of the problem is, it's a lawsuit. Then we have our version of it, Mr. O'Donnell. And that really isn't.
No, and we're having a bad year, which is no one's, no one's responsible.
But until that thing is litigated and resolved, we have, we just have to just go forward the way it is, and we can't. I was trying, I was trying to ascertain if there was some mistake mathematical or something, or looking at it, being creative. But it's basically your interpretation, respectfully, and the other position. And that's the problem.
So, so if I, if I understand Mr. Cronin's point of view, then you're saying the registry is getting zero out of the forty percent share? Because the man, you know, and, and I'm not, you have to wait and see how the year goes. But when you, at the beginning of the year, you could easily, where it says dedicated deeds revenue, put a number in, and whatever number you put in, two hundred grand, three hundred grand, four hundred grand, you can backfill these cuts you did. I mean, I mean, we asked for a hundred thousand in legal. You may think that's excessive, not based on what your attorney's charging. But, but zero isn't fair, and certainly seven isn't fair. You have to get that number up. I mean, you, you, you just have to get that.
You don't have, you don't have a copy I have, do you, of the budget, or do you not?
I just, I just got it.
Right. And I know it does say that, again, some of these things could be looked at later, if ever there are changes, things like that.
My experience is every time we come back for a supplemental, it gets voted down, or we don't even get to it because it's a hiring freeze or a spending freeze. So respectfully, we need money. I, we can't wait to September. We're trying to prosecute an appeal right now. And I didn't appeal it. And the, the judge ruled in favor of the registry. I didn't appeal it. I should have an attorney that helps. I should not be representing the interests of the registry and the taxpayers and registry stakeholders. We should have an attorney. That is just fair. And, and, I mean, again, I haven't heard anyone say that that disagrees with that here. So to me, that number has to get put up. And I do think the printing should be put up because we have contracts that have been put off because of these hiring and spending freezes with printing unlimited out of Holbrook and Town Book Binding, longtime vendors, again, vendors here in Norfolk County. So to me, if you increase our budget by two hundred thousand, you just put dedicated deeds excise revenue, two hundred thousand. Why does it always have to be Mr. Cronin's all or nothing approach? I'm trying to be reasonable here.
So if that was the case, again, I'm trying to figure out where that comes from. Where does it come from? Where do we take that, just out of heart, out of thin air? We just, we already have, am I reading it right? Deeds excise is four point two million, right? And all that amount, all that amount, forty percent, which you're saying you're entitled to under the law, is about one point six. Mr. Cronin has told us he built it into the budget.
That's right.
Yep.
So I don't know if there's any other money we're not looking at. Is there anything else we're not looking at?
That's my point. Where would you look?
You could, you could increase that estimate by two hundred thousand, make it four point four million, add the two hundred thousand to dedicated deeds excise revenue right here, and then replenish the two hundred thousand of cuts that you, you made there. You could easily do that.
Okay.
It would be a nice gesture.
Okay.
And in fairness, are you really going to say we should get zero for legal? Or seven, he's got it somewhere else.
Okay, so I see what you're saying too. You're saying artificially, not maybe artificially, wrong word, but bump it up a little bit.
It's been done in the past.
I understand that, and I, I know it has. But it's like paying you now, paying you later. If we bump it up, and then if it doesn't happen, then we're looking at some issues, right?
Yeah, of course.
You know?
Every action has a reaction somewhere within the.
That was Newton's law, wasn't it? One of those. I taught science with that.
Very careful about law.
No, but it's, it's, um, I understand now. I get, I get a benefit here, all right? I get it. And I think in the past, you might have done that. Boards might have done that. The commission, of course, the advisory board has approved this too. We haven't got the temperature of the advisory board. And if we put an artificial number in there, they might turn around and say, well, we don't agree with you.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained. And it's a gesture. I've been coming over here trying to be cooperative.
I know you have.
And, and if people don't think I have it.
No, I understand.
Then, you know.
And I understand too, as a department head, I respect you trying to lobby for your, like, your department, which we would think nothing less. We would think nothing less. I mean, everybody here, if you have schools here, you want to, you want to lobby for your people. Your personnel, that's a great thing. That's what we want. We want that. I do. But the bottom line, we shouldn't take a decision collectively and also then present it to the advisory board. That's the final saying. Tough one. I didn't know if there was some way to look at the opera money or if there's some way to, if the receipts bump up and then, except, everybody's, the federal cost's not going to take place right away. They're playing games. Although in springtime, you get an uptick in transactions, don't you, usually?
Usually this, usually the spring season is, is an uptick.
Okay.
Well, it's just a possible solution. You could increase that estimate by two hundred thousand and then put it as plus dedicated deeds revenue, where it says registry and replenish two hundred thousand. It's kind of funny, looking at this year as a down year. How much, how much is the two totals? See, we always separate it out because it's sixty, forty, but through the chair, Mr. Cronin, how much is the deeds excise through February twenty-ninth?
I don't have that information with me right now.
Well. Be with me. We have through February twenty-ninth, the county share was one million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. He, I mean, director pools our share and says it's all one big happy family shares. Yeah, so, I mean, that's still, you know, two point seven, two point, almost three million dollars. So, you know, I don't think it's out of line to increase something by two hundred thousand. But again, we'll see what happens. You know, you have four months left, right? Four months left, busy season. That's just twenty-four. And I'm not trying to say twenty-four is going to be exactly like twenty-five, but twenty-four was tough. So I don't think it's unreasonable that you could increase that estimate of four point two million to four point four million, slide the two hundred thousand right there, and then put back in, I would hope, something towards the legal, something towards the printing, and, and whatever else. I mean, you know, you know, protect maybe a couple of promotions and union positions. But, you know, there's a way to do it.
Well, I'd be, Mr. Chairman, I, I understand the position. I still think the budget is solid the way it presented today. I do. I want to make that clear. But, but I'd be open. I would be open. If things change and revenues go back up, I, I think some of the things that he's arguing for deserve a second look. And I think we probably should look at it in terms of, you know, that dedicated deed revenue, my head wrapped around it. That might be something we could justify before the advisory board. And I hope you would look at that with an open mind. I mean, again, if, if things change, to be fair, I think we have to kind of go forward with what we have here. But things can change. And that's, I think, the, the thing about the county that we've learned is it's, it's a fluid. Isn't it, we always say it's a fluid document? You know, things, things are in motion, things change, so.
It is in motion, that's for sure, but.
I mean, in particular, what jumped at me was the, again, it's unfortunate. We have a great engineering department, terrific group. And I know countless times Patrick has laid before increasing the people and expanding his department. And again, that's been put on hold. So there's a growth that we're.
But you're, you're cutting the registry department. Let's be clear. Let's be clear. You're cutting positions. You're cutting union positions. Oh, yes, you are. Those, those are positions, and in this budget, they're being cut. The position that, oh, we're going to revisit that, the two to one vote on, on March, that's gone. So we keep revisiting things, and then ultimately it leads to the registry being cut. So let's be clear. The promote, you know, this board has never supported registry promotions that we've put in the budget the last number of years.
I'm, I'm not going to take that. That's a miss. That's a mistake.
No, it isn't.
No, you're having a good day, but you really don't. In the end, you, you reach back to the same old dusty arguments.
No, in, no, Mr. Chairman.
Even in this budget.
No, in reg.
Name a name.
It's not, I said, the registry in our budget in the past has put a number of times Group Fifteen promotions. It's your prerogative to cut them, Mr. Chair, but check the past budgets. They've been cut. They're promotions. Those aren't people. What, so, and that was done in this budget and you, you're going to cut the fifteens. That's fine. Not fine, but I mean, my dad was in a union, but, but the.
Why would you add four positions this year in a year that's a bad year? Bad year for everyone, which we just got to talk about for two hours.
I could ask the question, what, why would?
No, man, I'm asking you a question.
I, I didn't add four. I added two promotions, which I've done every year because I think the union people deserve it. That, that ship has sailed. You people have never supported that. I get it. But.
All right.
But the four.
I'm ready to move on.
You, you will, but, but.
We're, we're going back into the same father all.
Now, the cuts.
Father all is every time.
You're, you're cutting, you're cutting jobs.
Now I'll have that thrown back in my face though, but, you know.
It's, it's, you know.
Sure. I just, I don't think we're cutting jobs. I don't.
We're not cutting jobs.
I don't think we are.
We're waiting, as a matter of fact, on one of the promotions.
Yeah, we cut.
Another promotion, a, a replacement.
Did we cut the legal? We did. Uh, and I made my position on that.
Yes, but we're not getting jobs.
And printing and binding, that's something that we're going to have to revisit. We have to, we have to have printing and binding. It's just something, you can't have zero for that. But for now, it's, it is what it is for now.
That budget zeros out. Forget what I put in as an increase, Mr. Chair, and we could disagree. Four positions are zeroed out. That, that, that's a cut in my mind, maybe not in yours, but that's a cut in positions. Four of them were zeroed out.
There's nobody in them.
How can they be in them when you, you, we tried to get somebody in there and you said, oh, it's a hiring freeze. The two promotions, the two elevens, you, you have to be there six months, you know, and, you know, from, to get from a nine to an eleven. So, you know, just because no one's in them doesn't mean you're not cutting positions. I didn't say cutting bodies. You're cutting positions. And two of them are current promotions, not the fifteens. That was a proposed promotion.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this, this, uh, budget item for today calls for a vote.
I'm making a motion.
Okay, I was just going to outline, fine. County Commissioner Budget Presentation and Vote. I, I urge you to vote on this today because I want to keep our schedule. I don't want to back the advisory board up. I don't want to give any false representation or hope, other than we will reveal things in September. It's written right in, what page did you write that on?
I'll be devil's advocate. Why do we have to vote it though? Why can't we wait? If the revenues are going to change, receipts are going to change.
They're not going to change by eight, by ten.
I've, I've been on advisory board where, well, we, we don't have the budgets till like June.
That's correct.
We don't vote until June.
That's because we were, we were, there was other issues.
What other issues?
The years I've been here, there were all sorts of issues. One of them was in the school for sure that held us up and held us up. And I don't think, and I can go back and check it, but I don't want to, uh, really debate it, is the but the, the, um, what do we, I know you know this. What is, uh, the Mayflower? What is that called?
Indirect cost.
Indirect cost. We didn't have the indirect costs. And that's what held us, put us to June. We have all this.
Aye.
And it, I mean, it may have been only a month, a week or three weeks ago, but, you know, I think we knew about the.
Well, I think the crux, we've played, became very clear. The crystal clear, fundamental issue here is our view and our interpretation of, again, the registry and the mandated and that argument that keeps going on and on and.
When is it going to be adjudicated? I'm, I'm not holding up.
I know. I hope it will just get resolved. That, in, in listening here, with all due respect, his viewpoint in terms of them revenue in us are like, I have a difference. And that, that's part of the problem. People, I've got, I've got that wrapped around my head. And still, I still feel though, that taking, uh, issue with some of the things you mentioned, that the printing budget was severely cut. And I know they have to do some of that work there. They have to do that. So I don't want to make it to be a shallow, hollow comment. I feel like if there is some change in circumstances, if we vote this budget, that we will look very carefully and give a careful consideration that we go back and revisit the registry budget in terms of those items there.
We still have to take a vote to go forward, to prepare all this for the, I'm not going to prepare something for the advisory board that isn't cast in concrete, good or bad. They have commented on this.
That's fine. I, I'm saying that's, I, I would like that, my position clear, and I hope you would maybe in some way tacitly understand and agree with that. That we will look at those items there. I mean, I know we have other positions too. I mean, if suddenly there was an influx of money, we might want to look at something in the engineering or other areas that were cut. Or maybe not advanced. Let's say not cut but not advanced. But, um, I understood his position. I think, I respect the fact that he lobbied for his department, but the problem.
Do you think we'll go through this otherwise?
But the problem is, see, it's again, it's A and B. It's, it's the argument there. That's the.
But I'm told because of the appeal.
Right.
Because he won, portion one in his mind, because of the appeal, the pot was so high. How did we get there? How did we get to the appeal? He sued us?
Right.
You can't take the good with the bad. You got to take it as a whole package. We are paying according to him way over what he was paying, but, you know.
Okay, well, why?
And we allowed him to have an outside counsel. And now we hear, I don't have any money to, 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 to fight the appeal. How did we get to appeal? And our lawyer says, we're going to keep, keep your mouth shut. We're going to continue this. Would you want to fight him? I mean, again, you guys are lawyers, not I, and I'm not trying to put it on you. I think, I understand this.
I totally get it. Uh, if I could, since I was away. Um, did the budget also reflect, Mr. Cronin, through your chair?
Yes.
Does it reflect also the Aggie School budget that was voted by the trustees?
Yes. Yes, it does. And that note is in there too.
It is.
A very good question.
Yes, this.
We went over this morning.
Trustee approved budget.
Could you show me the page? Just probably know.
Yeah.
Just right there. I'm not doubting you.
I asked the same question.
I just want to.
This morning.
Begins on page sixty, Commissioner.
I got it. Page sixty, sixty one?
Aren't you happy to share counsel that is?
So appropriation, Aggie School budget is eighteen million, sixteen thousand?
Nine sixteen.
Got it. Okay. But that included before the three voter, the trustees.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
It's in one of the boxes here.
All right. All right. I, I had, really, again, I want to commend you. It's a good budget. It's hard work. And I know you, I know for a fact you and Bill worked on this. I know you did.
On page sixty six.
Yeah.
It gives the bottom number and it says reflects three point two five, call it, as voted by the trustees.
Okay, hold on.
That's what we put in.
Where's that page? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Sixty six.
I closed my book. Sixty six, yeah.
Sixty six.
Oh yeah, that's all, yeah. Reflects three point two five, call it, as voted by trustees, right? Thank you, sir.
Some of these new nuances, as we're getting better and better with the budget, I think it's more readable. This was, this is an excellent.
No, and I, I know.
So much to come.
And I'm not, I'm just defending him politely. He did not have the benefit of this, this, this budget. I saw that. It was about printing, which the, the bubble said, printing is severe, but we're going to look at that if things change and those kind of comments like that. Uh, not getting into the legal, I'm just saying about that issue there, printing. Now, so those things help. I mean, those things help. It's a, the well-done document. I know you worked out on it. And if you want to stick on the schedule, I, I will saw it. I will go forward. It's fine.
I, I, I just think it would be, you know, we, 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 we're going to have a, you know, there's other bones in here. And again, it comes back to the advisory board too. But.
Now, the advisory board meets April tenth, correct?
Yes, sir.
But they're not voting at that. That's just.
May something.
All right, just to review it. And then the vote itself would be in May?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, well, something could happen. You never know. All right.
I mean.
Well, Mr. Colons made a motion.
I started to make a motion.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you had made a motion.
All right, so, uh, there's two parts of the motion. First part of the motion. A motion to approve the fiscal year twenty five Norfolk County Commission's budget as recommended by the county director and to forward that favorable county budget recommendation to the advisory board, which includes, as recommended by council, the Norfolk County Agricultural Schools Board of Trustee Budget Recommendation. That's my motion.
All right. I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion about the motion of the budget? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. We'll go to the next level.
Okay, so the second part of the motion is direct the county, is to direct the county director to prepare a budget letter to the advisory board expressing the commissioner's support for an alternative agricultural school budget recommendation wherein all non-union employees are granted two point two five percent cost of living adjustment.
Motion made.
I'll, I'll second it as a courtesy. I don't know where that came from, but I'll second it.
Any.
That just came out of nowhere. I had no idea.
Any, any, any discussion? Well, let me talk about that.
I, I had no idea. That came out of nowhere. I just got back. So I'm not going to vote on that. I won't. As chairman, I feel very awkward about that. The trustees have spoken. The trustees voted it. It's the trustees' vote. We present the budget. I don't think it's appropriate for us to argue against the trustees. I think the advisory board will take their position there. Personally, if someone wants to say I don't like it, that's fine.
How would the advisory board even know about it if it wasn't formally presented, like, just like the notation?
We're making a motion to go against a vote of a, of a body that we belong to. The vote, vote of the body, who's voted the body, four to three.
We lost.
That's fine. I had still.
I know. We lose, I make, we lose, and lose lot of votes, but I don't say I can't go to the next level. How else even I get it discussed? I, I, tell me, you know.
I, I just don't think it's appropriate.
You know, I disagree, but.
I mean, not today. Why do we have to do it today? I just got back. I have no background. You just, it's like, we're not going to take a vote against the advisory board? No, it's.
It's not a vote against the advisory board. It's, it's a vote for the county director to express our opinions during the trustee meeting. That's all it is.
Right.
So that they can understand how we had a different position.
Could you read that motion again?
I will. To direct the county director to prepare a budget letter to the advisory board expressing the commissioner's support of an alternative agricultural school budget recommendation wherein all non-union, all non-union employees are granted a two point two five percent cost of living adjustment. It's just, uh, it's just an expression of what we stated during the trustee meeting. That's all it is.
If we do that, then who speaks for, who speaks for the trustees? I'm chairman. Do I, I'll go against my, my own colleagues and say, now, as chairman, this was the vote. And that puts that, it's putting me in a, a very awkward position. And this may be why I said.
Go ahead, John. I think John's trying to shed some light on this. I could be wrong.
The commissioners, um, I believe, received an opinion that was drafted by, uh, Josh Coleman and Murphy, um, Larry Murphy on March eighth. My opinion offers direction to the trustees and the commissioners on their role involving the school's budget. On page five, at the top, it says, the commissioners have the discretion to include supplementary materials such as their own recommended budget or their opinion and/or recommendations of the school's budget as part of their submission to the county advisory board. This motion is in the spirit of that to inform the advisory board what the collective vote of the minority was on that date. That's what it attempts to do, Commissioner. And, uh, if you don't have a copy, I thought we gave you copies of these. I mailed them to you when we got them, but it's dated March eighth.
So in the course of the budget presentation, if I'm getting this right, you're going to be presenting it to the advisory board and you will then say, oh, by the way, on the agricultural budget, this is the budget prepared, but the commissioners have a different view.
That's correct. That's representative of the minority, uh, opinion, the commissioner's opinion on that. That's correct. Pursuant to the guidance of the legal cost.
The trustees voted this way. The commissioners had a different opinion. We just want them to understand that we had a different opinion.
That's all it's going to be.
Uh, the motion goes on to express specifically a, an item to consider a.
An alternative agricultural school budget recommendation wherein, wherein all non-union employees are granted a two point two five percent cost of living adjustment.
But you'd be asking the advisory board to take a position against the vote of the board of trustees.
They have the final say on the budget.
Well, they have the final say anyway. It appears there'll be, there'll be a, there'll be a registry discussion that day.
And who will speak for the trustees? Who speaks for the trustees in terms of representing the trustee vote?
I think the letter will speak for itself.
Oh, I think.
If they have additional questions, they can ask them.
I mean, I think it's chairman. If you want to speak and tell, it was, you lay it out, you know, this motion, this motion failed.
All right. I did vote against the motion. That, that was documented. It was true. All right. Yeah, I suppose, yeah, yeah, we'll be honest. I'll just, that's the way it is. I'll just say it. That's fine. I did not agree with the motion, but the motion failed and the vote, the motion did pass voted free. How much simpler can I make that? That's, you know.
Recommendation to your point, Commissioner Stady, um, understanding the uncomfortable situation that you've just revealed. Being the chair of the school trustees, I believe you have a meeting of the trustees, uh, next week.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I suggest you ask the board to consider a spokesman in the event that there is some interest in discussing the trustees' majority opinion on the tenth. Just to know, way out, if you'd like to find somebody who can speak to it.
Yeah.
Other than yourself, because you can't.
Right, because it's just, it's only, you know.
Yes.
I don't want to be hot fired. I want to be sincere. And we weigh one hand and we have the other, but I want to make sure that the, the trustees are given an opportunity to represent themselves as well.
Consider that as an opportunity.
Okay. That's fair. All right.
I have one, based on that, I have a comment.
That's fair.
This is the difference for the non-union people. It's, I've heard the figure of twenty eight thousand. Is that correct?
Twenty seven thousand.
Okay, I don't doubt the figure, but I, I think someone's, someone ought to have it in their sleep pocket. So, and I don't, I'm not, I don't doubt it. But I'm sure if you get with twenty eight other people in addition to us, first thing you're going to say is how much difference is it? And then, you know, I think you'd have, and I, and I, I just have it in your pocket. I'll give it to us to put in, uh, give it to the chair to put in his pocket. Because it's well discussed and I, I've, you're the only one that can supply that number anyway. I could never go and compare the two, but I believe it, but that's going to come up. It isn't four million. It isn't two million. It isn't, you know.
Fine, that's fair. I think that's, that's, that's a fair way to approach it. So, all right. I can second that motion.
On, on, on Commissioner Colons' motion, motion made and seconded.
You have Mr. Cronin talk to the advisory board.
Do you have Mr. Cronin inform? Now, how?
Can we read it again?
How are we going to do this? Go ahead.
He'll inform the advisory board.
The motion is to direct the county director to prepare a budget letter to the advisory board expressing the commissioner's support of an alternative agricultural school budget recommendation wherein all non-union employees are granted a two point two five percent cost of living adjustment.
I'll have that letter for you next week.
Okay, motion made and seconded. No, we have a question. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm just.
Go ahead. You have a question. Now we know.
Are, aren't you instead suggesting an alternative county budget? That includes, you're not, there is no school budget that they're voting on. They're voting on the county budget. So if you're going to make an adjustment, you have to be making adjustments to the county budget, not the school budget.
No, not according to the opinion by Josh. The commissioners have already approved the conveyance of the proposed budget, which is the trustees' budget structure. What the opinion says is an order for the advisory board to consider an alternative for opinion. This letter has to be conveyed. That's all.
But the consequence is an alternative county budget than what, than the one you're providing?
That becomes the advisory board's role in their, in their decision to revisit at that point the county budget. Because they're the only ones that's through law that can increase, decrease, or alter county budgets. What the vote did today is it conveys the county's budget inclusive of the trustees' vote to the advisory board. Per opinion, you're producing a, a parallel letter to inform the advisory board of a different opinion to consider. So the vote will be pursuant to the advisory board, the budget that was presented today. And the advisory board will hear concerns or feedback on, on your letter from the commissioners. And then they can discuss it upon the whim of the chair. That's how it plays.
Well, let's say hypothetically, so much the same way, the previous speaker had a concern about extra money. If he made a case and the advisory board could consider that.
That's right.
They could up that budget.
Absolutely.
By the appropriate amount they want.
They absolutely could.
Okay. So same token here, if the advisory board wants to sustain the vote of the trustees.
They can do so.
The number stays the same.
That's right.
But if they say, well, you know what? We don't want to do that. We want it to be a different number. Doesn't the budget go down a little bit?
It would upon a motion and an acceptance and a vote to do so, you don't say that.
So to your point, you're right.
But they wouldn't be voting on it at this next meeting anyway.
Right.
This is just an informational, uh, meeting at the advisory board.
Okay. But the number will change. It will change. The budget, as you said, John Wall. The total budget will go down.
County budget?
Wouldn't it? I mean, it'll have to.
If, I'm, I'm misunderstanding your question.
Okay. If the raise for the non-union gets not verified by the advisory board.
Yes, of course.
Gets twenty five thousand dollars or increases to a thousand dollars.
That's right.
The budget will be reduced.
Correct.
Right?
Okay, on the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
You know, I want to go back to one other thing, uh, we did earlier.
We got another, we, we still got stuff here.
No, no, at, at the beginning, it was just, um, item four, the minutes of the open session meeting of March twentieth, I, I, um, I voted to approve it and you seconded it. Uh, Commissioner Stady did not, um, because he was away.
It's true that you and I.
Right, because he was doing county business, but the minutes of the meeting, um, March twenty seventh, it says in here.
Can it be the twenty second?
No, excuse me.
You got me a little confused. Okay, twentieth.
Uh, so a motion, it said, it said, from minutes of the meeting from three twenty twenty four, a motion was made by Commissioner Stady, seconded by Commissioner Colts. You weren't here that day. Uh, to approve the minutes from March thirteenth. Actually, our mo- our, our motion was to hold those minute meetings for you to vote on the day, and we didn't do that. So I would, I would propose if the next meeting, that we have the corrected, okay, we, we can go with this as corrected. Take care, John. Uh, as corrected, but the minutes from, uh, March thirteenth, twenty twenty four hasn't been voted on yet. We held that for you to vote on because you were there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next, so.
And I was there.
You see what I mean?
I was there the thirteenth. I wasn't there the twentieth.
Right, right. So he, he never voted on the thirteenth minutes.
You can make a friendly amendment at this point, like it's a ministerial act to edit the meeting minutes of March twenty.
Make a motion.
Okay, so, so I, I'll, I want to revisit my motion earlier from item four. And, um, the, uh, I, I would approve them, the minutes as amended, uh, not to include that there was a motion by Commissioner Stady because he was not there. Uh, but, but, but we never, um, I want to, I want to knock that, that whole. But, but, but we never, I want to, I want to knock that whole thing about the, the March thirteen twenty four, twenty twenty four minutes out because we voted actually to hold those minutes for Commissioner Stady. So it should, it should read that. I'm, I'm okay with the minutes so long as they, they read that correction that we held the minutes. Would you be more comfortable if we had a revisitation of the tape to come back and actually prep a fresh version of this for next week? Sure. Okay, we can do that.
Okay. I think what happens is you get rolling, trying to type them and convert them and you know, you can just take it for granted, but, okay.
We'll bring this back next week.
Please.
Yeah, thank you.
Number fifteen.
I just want to make sure that you get the board on the mark, which we haven't done yet.
Good catch. No, it's a good catch.
Report of the county director, number fifteen.
I have twenty three items here. Just kidding. Two items.
You had me.
First of all, the department should be advised that yesterday our human resources director and our staff sent out use lose reports to each of you. Please take those reports, distribute them to their staff, to your staff, to alert them of their time availability between now and the fiscal year end. We want all employees to be aware of the use lose balances, to take appropriate action to manage their time. The second item, I'm happy to report to the commissioners. Yesterday afternoon, the county reached tentative agreement with ASME on impact bargaining associated with employee handbook. The commissioners may recall, you approved the handbook back in December. ASME asked to enter into impact bargaining, which I believe we had two full sessions of. We concluded earlier this week with some edits that I think you'll find acceptable and relatively non-impactful, but meaningful to the collective bargaining members. We're going to hold bringing that back to you to revoke the handbook inclusive of the impact outcome until the schools have completed their discussion. It's unclear at this time how in-depth the schools' impacts may be, but we will follow that. And Michelle informs us that Josh will let her know when they're ready to move one way or another. So we'll monitor it, hopefully have it back before you without further delay, but it was a pleasure meeting with your, your union staff over the last two meetings. They're very productive, very thorough and happy with the outcome. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Director Cronin? I have nothing else for this meeting. Is there any emergency items, direct commissioner?
It's probably not an emergency.
No, okay, go ahead. We're going to allow it.
Mr. Chairman, if, if they could, I want to revisit something that took place last week. It was a report on the schedule of cost of service of the courthouse facilities. And when I did review it, which I found fascinating, I found something I had a question on, which I would just ask for an answer by next week. That's all. It's the hours late. But I couldn't understand that the percent of cost assigned to the various courts really intrigued me. Like I had Superior Court, Registry, Denham Court, things like that. What I particularly was concerned about, get to the point, was it says the Denham complex is only sixty three percent. Why is that? Why is that?
Well, not fifty three percent.
No, sixty three. So it was like, there was the court with Superior is a hundred, the Denham district was a hundred, Quincy district's a hundred, and it had Denham. I don't understand this. Denham complex, sixty three. So let's see what that means.
Commissioner, I think that question could be cleaned up relatively quickly following the meeting. If you want to go and ask Phil, he prepares that document.
Okay.
It's solidified in our agreement with the Commonwealth.
Oh, that's the one that went to Commonwealth.
That's correct. It's a court assessment fee.
Was he around today?
He is here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. I just wanted, I didn't.
Because look at the detail back in the, before those pages.
Yeah.
I mean, they go from fifty thousand to eight dollars for a screw they had to buy. And it's pretty detailed. I made a comment of that and I, you know, this is films, mainly, and you know.
I just said, I didn't know why I couldn't get that number.
All right, that's fine. Can't get it answered, remember.
All right. That's fine.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at two fifty five.
All in favor?
All right.